Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order the city commission meeting for the city of El Dorado, February 19th. First on our agenda would be roll call.
Mayor Haynes.
Present.
Commissioner Lewis? Sorry, Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Skip one. Commissioner Badway?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Present.
Thank you. Next would be invocation by Reverend Mark Somerville, family worship sinner.
Show up our hearts together. Our gracious Father, we come to you this evening. We are thankful that we can come to you in prayer and seek your wisdom and guidance. Tonight, we're mindful of our country tonight as we are grieving the loss in Florida and as we're grieving our country going through these turbulent times. We pray that your hand will be upon our leadership. You'll guide them. Tonight, we ask for your wisdom in this city council meeting. We pray you'll guide them in their decisions they make for the good of El Dorado. Thank you for your blessings, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. Next item on our agenda would be a recognition for Kyle Huffman. Kyle, I believe, is going to talk to us about his Eagle Scout project.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Kyle Huffman, and I built a Gaga Ball pit in North Park in El Dorado. And basically what Gaga Ball is, is a short little game that is played inside a pit. It's kind of like a softer version of Dodgeball where everyone starts with a hand on the wall. Somebody throws the ball in the center. It's like a count of three, Gaga Ball. And everybody rushes to hit the ball. You hit the ball with your hands, and if the ball touches below your knees, you're out. And last person standing wins. So that's basically what Gaga Ball is. And I built a pit for my Eagle Scout project.
Any questions, Kyle?
No, he did a good job. He came to the, when we were on the Parks and Rec, presented that to us, and that went through the Parks and Rec. So it turned out really good. Congratulations.
Kyle, how long has Gaga Ball been around? Is this a relatively new game, or is it an old game? I'd never heard of Gaga Ball till a couple of weeks ago, or whenever.
I don't know how old it is, but I hadn't heard of it until I joined Boy Scouts.
So you didn't like it then or nothing?
No.
Wonderful. Yeah, a lot of pride in doing something that's permanent in our park, so congratulations to you and for the Eagle Scout and for the Boy Scouts.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Well, you stayed right there. We have something we'd like to present to you. Kyle, I appreciate your contribution to the city of El Dorado and the Parks and Rec. Present you with this token.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Kyle, on your way back to your seat, would you turn the heat down, please? If you're hot, it's hot.
Wonderful. Next on our agenda would be personal appearances. We have Sandy DeWitt, Journey to Recovery.
I don't think she's here, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on. If she arrives, we can come back to it. That's okay with everybody? All right, next on our agenda would be consent agenda. Items on your consent agenda which were forwarded to you earlier this week.
Mr. Ray, you skipped public comment.
I did, didn't I? Sorry. Next on our agenda would be public comment. Thank you, Tabitha, for pointing that out. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. To the consent agenda. Items which have been presented to your, in your packet earlier this week. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Being none, I entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Okay, we moved to second on the consent agenda. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Having none in our old business, we'll move on to new business. On our agenda, which would be a presentation from the Regional Economic Area Partnership.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city commissioners, and Mr. Dilner. Keith Loyn, I am the senior administrator for the Regional Economic Area Partnership, and very pleased to be here this evening to provide a bit of an overview and answer any questions you may have. And I want to start my remarks by recognizing and thanking Mayor Haynes for his engagement and his leadership in this organization and throughout the region. REEP is a council of governments that is made up of elected and administrative officials throughout South Central Kansas. It is a voluntary organization. I call it a coalition of the willing, and it is made up of individuals and organizations who recognize that economies, especially in this day and age, are not based on political jurisdictions, on individual cities or counties, but a region overall. And REEP and the individuals who started these conversations some 20 years ago recognize that. And even though REEP is a voluntary organization, it has continued to exist into its 20th year now. And I've been around and working with the organization long enough. El Dorado is one of the charter members under the leadership at the time of Mayor Ed Blake, and Stan Stewart was the city manager at the time. And so again, I certainly recognize and appreciate not only the leadership from Mayor Haynes, but historically the role that officials from El Dorado have played in this organization. REEP is a very modest organization, I would say. It is staffed by barely two full-time employees. Marla Canfield is the executive director, and she could not be here tonight, but she handles the day-to-day work. My role is to serve as the senior administrator, so this is part of my duties. I am also the chief elected official, chief elected officer, excuse me, for the Workforce Alliance of South Central Kansas, and we are the workforce board here in this region. And we provide staff services to the Regional Economic Area Partnership through a contractual agreement. And as I mentioned, I've been working with REEP for a number of years. And the overall purpose of REEP is to provide a forum for local government leaders to come together and to address and work on issues that really do not respect traditional political boundaries, and issues that impact an entire region above and beyond just a single jurisdiction. And some examples of those are issues around transportation, issues around jobs and workforce development, natural resources, and then economic development as well is included in that. There's a packet of information that I provided you that has some summary information about REEP. And again, I'm more than happy to answer any questions. Just to highlight a couple of things that are currently going on. REEP did go through a strategic planning process last year. I think with every organization, at some point in time, you need to ask and review your overall purpose and your role in a community. And the members of REEP certainly recognize the value that they have in convening leaders from throughout the region, and the shared voice that a group of elected officials can bring in terms of raising attention on really key and important issues. And two of those examples, let me talk about briefly and answering questions, but every year for the past 15 or so years, REEP has worked with our members and stakeholders in the region to identify a set of policy priorities that go into a legislative agenda. And so part of REEP's mission is to have conversations with legislators, both back here at home, in their districts, and in our communities, but also up in Topeka as well. And for this year, a couple of examples that are really pivotal issues for the region. One is jobs and workforce development. Recognizing when you have a company like Spirit Aero Systems, that even though they are located in Sedgwick County, their draw for employees is across the region and even reaches down into Oklahoma. And when they come out and they announce that they are in a position to increase their workforce by 1,000, as they did just about two months ago, that definitely has a regional impact. The question is, what pressure does that put on all of us here in local governments and regions? I mean, so when they, Spirit says 1,000 jobs, well, that is jobs that, that's just not those 1,000 jobs. Those are going to be, when they hire, they're going to be hiring from their supply chain. And so they will be causing some pain to some of their companies that provide parts to Spirit. And how are we going to find those workers? And so, not even with that issue, if Spirit's going to get busier and have more work, then the supply chain's going to have more work as well. So that 1,000 jobs at Spirit, certainly within the industry, increases jobs all across the board. And when you think outside of the industry, when you think about construction and healthcare and retail, again, adding workforce in that number certainly has a regional impact. And so as we look at issues, how are we going to be able to train the workers that are needed in today's economy with technology? And things have really changed. If you go visit any manufacturing company these days, it is all technology-based. It is not, as, to quote a, or use a paraphrase, "It's not your father's manufacturing plant." Again, it is high-tech. There are clean rooms. It's composite technology. It is automation. And so how are we going to get those workers? Where do we create those jobs? So REEP has looked at the issues around workforce development and training, around issues like funding of current technical education programs where a junior or senior in high school can actually attend classes at Butler Community College, Wichita Technical College, and that tuition is supported, allowing them, at the time graduation comes, to have a skill set, and in some cases even a certification or a credential, ready to go into the workforce. We're also looking to restore some funding that had been pulled back from some job training programs historically. And there's also a piece of legislation that would provide a tax credit to individuals who move to Kansas and would take a job in the aviation industry. So that's part of how we look at, you know, we're not going to solve the issue by one single policy or plan. It's a variety of issues, and if we can help our aviation companies and other industries recruit, again, that will provide some support as well. We have met with REEP, the members of REEP hosted the South Central Kansas Legislative Delegation, that is legislators from all across the 10 county region, and there's approximately 50 or so in that, that split between the House and the Senate. That's a fairly significant voting block. And again, understanding that some of these workforce issues have a real pressing need in South Central Kansas that may be a little bit different in the look-up in Kansas City area, maybe in western Kansas. We talked to our legislators about that. Senator Gene Solentrop, who chairs the delegation, has asked us to help bring a blueprint. He wants to have a series of meetings over the next six months. He wants us to engage leadership from institutions, training and education institutions here in the region, and try to help state policymakers, state legislators, and the new governor, whoever's going to be the governor, I should say, come 2019, really understand the workforce needs and how significant that is in South Central Kansas. Another issue that is part of the legislative discussion this year is the issue of transportation, transportation infrastructure. It is no secret that the state has been sweeping money out of transportation funds for some time now to support general fund obligations. And the pain is now really being felt on a couple different ways. Kansas has the third most highway miles of any state in the Union, so that's a significant investment, and that's part of the infrastructure and becomes that incentive for economic development, for business and industry. Who knows, they can depend on quality roads and quality transportation infrastructure. We are now at risk in some of those. There have been a number of projects that have been delayed or canceled because of the lack of funding. Recently, legislative, legislature took action to create a task force, a 27-member task force, that is going to be looking at key critical issues of transportation infrastructure, and again, something to present to governor that will be coming into office come 2019, and legislators who head to Topeka come January 2019. And so REEP is going to provide an opportunity for you all, for the members, to really highlight what are those critical infrastructure needs around transportation here in the city of El Dorado and Butler County? How does that translate into job growth or economic activity? And we want to try to identify those priorities and to help package those up and present them to our legislative delegation. So again, ideally, we can hope to maybe secure some level of state investment and some more support for our business and industry and the individuals who call South Central Kansas home. I could go on, I could talk about a few other issues, but I would, I don't want to become too redundant here, and Mayor Haynes would certainly answer any questions you have or other commissioners have about the regional economic area partnership.
Wonderful. Thanks for your time coming to speak with us today, share a little bit about what REEP is. It's not necessarily my voice. Any questions from the commission?
We have your contact information, right?
Yes, yes. My contact information is in here. Just, and certainly we work with Mr. Dilner. One of the things that REEP has is, we call it our technical advisory committee, and it's made up of the city managers and administrators throughout the region, and Mr. Dilner is very active in that. And so again, that's another way we get the input from our member communities and help guide our actions. And let me just quickly mention two other things that I think are a particular benefit to a member, to a community like El Dorado. We have a contract with Wichita State University, the Public Policy Management Center, and so they conduct research on behalf of REEP and individual communities. So again, that really helps us understand some of the policy issues and its ramifications. The other thing the Public Policy Management Center does is provide professional development and continuing education, both for city and county staff, but also elected officials. And as REEP members, when they put on those seminars or workshops, the city of El Dorado receives a discount for enrolling those individuals in those classes. REEP also secured a grant through the Kansas Leadership Center this year to provide leadership training to individuals from our member communities at no charge whatsoever. And then the last little piece that Wichita State helps us with is that there's a grant finding service, because there are a number of different grants that are available to local governments, not only from a state or federal government, but from foundations and other organizations. And so that information comes out on a fairly regular basis. I don't know if the city of El Dorado's had the opportunity to take advantage of those. I did recently hear about the city of Cheney secured a grant to help with some developments under parks. I think a grant to secure the purchase of a new fire truck. So again, I think there's a certain level of, there's some economies of scale that come together nicely when you have multiple governments kind of working together and as communication chain that we have put up there. So just wanted to throw out there a couple of other advantages that I certainly feel and hope you all would recognize from your membership in this organization.
Wonderful. I would say that the time spent in the past year on the strategic planning has been great work. I'm certainly interested in seeing all this play out in the next year or so. There's a lot of great work planned there. And I would say also that thanks to the commission for allowing me to be a part of this, it is true that when this council of governments gets together and have a common voice, it's heard in Topeka, that's what's important, and it's also, it's been a good way to get together on some common issues for the region, so.
And Mayor Haynes, I'd say we certainly appreciate you giving the time. I know that you have actually gone on a couple of trips, the city-to-city visits, that have been led by the Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce. I think one of those outcomes is, you're going to be hearing very soon about a new visioning process that community leaders are going to be engaging in, that really is, been driven by what has been learned from some of these other communities. And one, the leadership has come to REEP and asked, how do we make this regional? How do, when we look at issues to help the South Central Kansas economy, how do we engage local governments and other officials? And Mayor Haynes, again, I think your presence and your leadership has been a catalyst in that for them approaching us, really in advance of this being rolled out in a very public way. We'll be hearing more about it in the very near future, but again, I look forward to maybe coming back here and updating the commission on that, and certainly having you all, at whatever level you feel is most appropriate, to be engaged in that process.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda, item 13, would be an application to rezone 205-8 Southeast Highway 54.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, there was an application to rezone this property from agricultural residential to R3 multifamily. This property is located within the city of El Dorado Growth Area. The Planning Commission held a public hearing January 25th and voted five to zero to recommend approval of the rezone.
Okay. You have questions from the commission on this? Something that we talked about in room session last week also.
So, okay, it's going from agricultural to residential, is that?
It's AR, so agricultural residential.
Okay.
So that is the zoning that was assigned when it was created within our growth area. Obviously, since the 50s, it is operated as a hotel, so it doesn't even fall with underneath that current zoning. It's a grandfathered in. The development that the future owners looking to do out there fits the R3 as well as the hotel, so it just makes sense to go ahead and rezone this for its current use and its future use.
Okay. So any questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Ordinance amendment, please.
G 1270.
I move to approve case number 18-001-REZ, requesting a rezoning of 2058 Southeast Highway 54 to R3 Multiple Family Dwelling District, and that ordinance number G 1270 be approved.
Case been moved to second. Any further question? Move to roll call.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
All right. Thank you. Move on to item 14, zoning ordinance amendment.
Yes, this is in front of you tonight to consider changing our zoning ordinance to increase the fees for special use permits, rezones, variances. Currently, they are at $100, and the recommendation is to increase that to $150. The Planning Commission has well-held a public hearing January 25th on this issue and recommended approval to the $150 level. What that $150 does is cover our direct cost of publication. There's a lot of notification requirements involved when you do a rezone like the previous item we just heard, and we're trying to cover all of those costs associated with publication.
So basically, we're just trying to stay ahead of that current there?
Yeah, there's lots of these cases where it'll be a lot more folks notified, or a longer description in the rezone, and the cost of the publication exceeds what we charge the folks to do, to have, to file a rezone.
I mean, reading through the conversation at the Planning Commission, I mean, is $150 enough? When is it going to need to be two?
It's been 100 for, as far as I can remember.
I'm looking at the comparable numbers, and there's, I mean, there's nothing that cheap. I mean, I don't know if you guys read that or not, but.
I did, and I just, I mean, are you confident this is going to cover your cost for?
Publication.
For the relative future, or, I mean, I mean, how often, or how soon do you think we may have to revisit this?
You know, we're $110, maybe $115 on the larger ones, so we got a little.
We got a little wiggle in there, but, okay. On average, we're going to be okay with that number for quite some time, it sounds like.
Yeah, you know.
There's a little bit of room. My concern is, five years down the road, we got to do it again. You know, it's kind of one of those, I don't know, just the conversation seemed that it was, it was 200, it was a little more of the number that they were wanting.
It's something definitely we'll keep our eyes on, and what Jay and I have discussed is, and he's been getting together these annual updates of our zoning regulations, catching things like those, and other little nuances within our zoning regulations that maybe don't apply to us anymore, or laws have changed, so this is something definitely we can look at annually. And when we do these annual zoning regulation amendments, we'll hold one public hearing, and it'll be maybe one thing a year, maybe you might have 10 things a year that we want to discuss and look at changing, and this can be something we check in on. You know, it's always covered, and I look at those bills every month when we get the publication, and here lately, they've just exceeded that. We discussed that we needed to do something about that.
But you and Jay both are comfortable with this increase, this rating?
You know, that's our feeling, just covering the direct, none of the indirect costs, but just the direct cost of the publication. You know, of course, there's other costs involved, the staff time and printing and all, all those other various things, but.
That normally you wouldn't have if it wasn't for a special use permit?
Yeah, and it's just like building permits. If a building permit pulled, you know, that may or may not cover the actual cost of the building official and his time, or his plans, or.
Right, but those escalate, though. I mean, they're based on the.
Correct.
On the, so, I don't know, maybe Matt's right, maybe $150 is enough.
It's all.
If you say there are some other costs, I mean, you have your direct costs, but if there are other costs associated with a special use permit, and $150 isn't going to cover it, then maybe, maybe it ought to be 200.
It's hard to nail that now. I mean, what is that cost?
I, I mean, I, what I'm hearing is, we'll keep an eye on it, look at this, something that we look at annually. If it starts to get, make a change, we can. It seems to me that, I don't know, I'm comfortable with $150. I would be, doubling it seems like a lot to do at one time, so. Okay, any further questions? None, I'd entertain a motion. There isn't one I'd make the motion. I can do that. I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning amendments, increasing the rezoning SUP and variance fees to a hundred and fifty dollars, and the ordinance G twelve seventy-one be approved.
Second.
Further comment, question? Okay, roll, roll call.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to item fifteen, a refuse ordinance amendment. This is a result of our recycling analysis and such, something we've discussed at the work session also. Any wish to speak to that before we take any action?
Sure. Again, the proposed ordinance will increase the recycling fee one dollar after conducting the survey and discussion with commission. One dollar will cover the additional increase in expenses related specifically to the recycling program, so we'll take that fee up one dollar to fifteen seventy-five.
Monthly?
I'm sorry.
Monthly.
Per month, yes, that's right. And I believe it, when will the ordinance be effective? Will that be the...
Will be effective March first, the first time our citizens will see it will be April, on their April utility bill.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the commissions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number G twelve seventy-two, an ordinance amending chapter eight point zero four of the municipal code pertaining to refuge, collection, and disposal rates.
Second.
Case moved in second. Any further question? Roll call.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
All right. Next thing on our agenda would be industrial park master plan. Want to speak to that?
We've discussed this in the past. What we're interested in doing is, there is around two hundred and eighty acres to the west of the Turnpike that the City of Eldorado, Eldorado Inc., and then the Stone Family as well, have all have interest in and seeing developed. Hundred acre parcel just east of Mears Fertilizer has been within the city's hands for over twenty years now, somewhere in there. And we have, we have shown that site to prospects and folks over the years, but it's a real, it's a leap for the city. It's on the other side of Turnpike. The city doesn't really have infrastructure that is on the west side of that Turnpike, and I think as we move and become a little more proactive in the way we recruit industrial prospects, businesses, what have you into town, we need to be really aware of what we have there today and really look at a master plan, plan these sites out, have a good understanding of the infrastructure needs in those areas, how, how we as a city are going to grow and accommodate additional traffic, where trucks are going to come into these sites at, how does it play in with the Kansas Turnpike and KDOT, this West Star have added with power, Kansas Gas, all of these things. And for the last while, you know, we, we'll get a prospect, there's someone interested in just a generalized site, say, within the region or Kansas, and it's always a scramble to try to put data together, and there's not a real good plan. So the city, along with Eldorado Inc., interviewed a number of consultants to look at the idea of master planning, this roughly two hundred and eighty acres to the west of the Turnpike. We settled in after we interviewed five or six, five or six consultants in on PEC. We've worked out a few details with them on a scope, things that we want within this plan, that has gotten narrowed down to where we want to see it, and tonight, we're asking you to allow the city manager to sign a contract with PEC for services for the development of a master plan of the west Eldorado industrial parks. Funding, funding for this plan will come out of your industrial mill levy. That is the one mill that's generated every year and put into the industrial mill levy fund to fund things like this. And really, it's time, it's, it's, we are out of room in our original Eldorado industrial park. It's time to expand. Oh, and one more thing, Eldorado Inc. has agreed to pay half the cost, and they voted that at their last board meeting. So the, the plan is estimated to cost eighty-one thousand three hundred dollars, and Eldorado Inc. has agreed to pay half of those costs.
When you said you've talked about it in the past, what do you mean by that?
There was some reluctance in spending money on, on bare ground. I would say there was maybe a little bit of a mindset is, we have assets in Eldorado, they'll come find us, and we'll just figure it out. And, and as we learn, you know, we need to, we need to show ourselves what we have to these folks, I mean, they aren't necessarily going to come find us.
Well, I think it's important that if you get a prospect and they say, okay, what's, what is out there for power? What is out there? You ought to be able to rattle that off, I think, I mean...
Well, I think it's twofold. One is, this, this is the plan, this is not approving any work to be done out there. And in a lot of cases, these, these prospects that come are project driven, you know, the infrastructure and the costs associated with it are driven by the project that's there. But until, until you can display out a proof that you've given them some thought to what's really available there and where your, where our roadblocks are, and maybe there's some roadblocks we can budget and take care of in terms of, I mean, the electrical lines to leases is a prime example of getting that at least understood, to know what it takes to do it, and that way, when a prospect comes and looks at that land, we can, with, with some level of certainty, talk about what the costs are to get stuff to them, as well as the timeframe it takes to make, to make a quote unquote shovel ready.
And it helps you all to make the determination, is, is a prospect putting enough capital in or creating enough jobs to justify the city's expense?
Exactly. Helps us better clarify our costs. So I think this is a, yeah, I'm, I'm a strong advocate for going through the process to understanding.
I concur.
And it's bigger than just this land. I mean, the way I envision this, this is how we're really setting ourselves up to grow to the west. How are we going to handle traffic? How are we going to cross that Turnpike? So it's something that really excites me. I look forward to getting through this process.
And I appreciate the partnership with Inc. playing out that they fund half of this, so this is, this is like a win-win for me.
And the money is there in the mill, in the, for that?
Yeah.
What is the timeframe that this would be completed?
You know, I don't think we've, we've defined that yet. When we expected answer, I mean, really, we're, we're in no rush unless someone comes knocking on our door. We want to do...
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to, just in my head, trying to think of when we're going to see you back here with a report. I mean, is it by the end of the year?
Yeah, I think easily within the year, we will have something that David can put an update you guys in managers' reports as we go and have a presentation.
I mean, I would just, it's a good question. I'd like, I mean...
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I, I would like it to be, I mean, with what was in the recently, what's been happening, I would, I would prefer it to be by the end of the year, just so that way we're not, we're not waiting a year and a half, you know, next in line type thing, personally.
And you know, I was thinking, I brought a map as well, that might help visualize this for the folks at home as well. You see the Turnpike on there, obviously. The hundred and twenty-one acres, just through the west of Turnpike, is City of Eldorado property. That was as well given to us from the Stone Family. The hundred and four acres there is owned by the City of Eldorado and Eldorado Inc. The cyan color, the, the blue color there is property owned by the Kansas Turnpike. They are interested in this process with us as well, and if the right project or makes sense, we're, they're willing to talk. As the, if they have property available for development, they're willing to be partners with us, so...
Is that, is the, there's a little finger going, does that meet, is that road, road access right there?
It does.
Off to that street?
At times.
Well, that, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Where there's no trees or brush in it, it goes back down.
Yeah, there, there is a property there, IPS, that kind of has encroached a lot within the city's property, but the intent is there is access, they're off industrial...
Ongoing debate.
There's always something, I think.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Scott. All right, any further questions from the commissions? None, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we vote to allow the city manager to sign the contract with PEC for the development of master plan for the industrial park west of the Turnpike.
Second.
Case moved in second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries forward to the draw. Next on our agenda would be reports from the commission and department advisory boards.
I will start. Met for the first time with the youth commission last Monday, and we got to play a fire. Put our coats on and went out in the driveway parking lot of the fire department and set fires and put them out with fire extinguishers. It was obvious the girls had more fun doing it than the boys did, but that's okay, it's going to be a fun group. Tabitha didn't share with me that I had to, in turn, summarize city commission meetings for them, so I let Tabitha summarize, and so I have taken notes tonight so that I know what I need to say to them. And our next meeting in March, they will be talking about a project that they want to do, don't know whether they, it's in the area of cleanup, they just haven't decided where they're going to clean up.
Great.
And that's it.
Great.
Haven't had a, for trails advisory, just wanted to express condolences to both the Chase family and the Nail family. Both, both men were, did a lot for the community, and both men will be missed.
Okay, thank you. Matt?
I'm the CTC board, Matt. They went over bed tax numbers, which are dropping. We, very low, this, I think she says, the lowest numbers in the past five years. Some people think that's due to the, there's no turnaround last year, but it, it was, it's been a rough year for them. They also voted to kind of restructure the fees at the, is that the Civic Center one they did it on? Is it, was it the depot in the Civic Center was the one they wanted more information on?
Maybe. I'm not sure.
Okay, yeah. It was, they, they restructured the Civic Center fees. Now it's one fee rather than with kitchen or without kitchen, so it's, it's one fee for, just simplify it. They're working on raising the fees for the train depot of running that. I foresee an increase coming for that, for that in the near future. They're going to meet again next month. The Parkinson wreck, we haven't met since the last time we've met, but I do want to, I do want to say, like, that we had a work session two weeks, a week ago, two weeks ago, a week ago. Brad, like I asked you, and we discussed, let the work session, we, I encourage everybody out in the city to look at the tether law on your dogs and, and read that, notice what, what it says now. We do not, under, under the new city code, that your dog can't be tethered for more than an hour, and then it needs to be taken off chain and taken inside. I've, we, we encouraged Brad to follow up on that and start enforcing that, so I just want to let everybody know that watches that, you know, don't chain your dog up, and if not, if you don't have a fence, figure out how to get a fence. I just, I, I just don't want to see it. We have the law in books, and it's time to start enforcing it. It's been there for about three years now, three, three and a half years, and it's, I just, they're going to come looking, and if you see it in town, call them up, let them, let the city know so we can get out there and take a look at it. That's all I got, Mr. Brad.
I forgot something.
Okay.
One, I wish Commissioner Lewis, he's in recovery, had surgery today to repair the image on his eye socket.
Yeah.
I'm sure he's, would rather be here than...
What he was doing today.
Yeah, so Greg, get, get well soon.
Yeah, very much, thank you for that. I don't have anything to report. Eldorado Inc. was this past week, and I was unable to attend, so it'd be, we kind of talked about their participation in the master plan, and that was a major topic on their agenda, so I don't have anything to report from there. And REAP was here, so those are my...
I do have one more. Kendra and I attended the Main Street gathering down at Charlie's, and that was, that was very enlightening on the, the feel and the, the mood and the tenor of that group. You were there too, Scott, and did a very nice job, appreciate it. You keep it active with that group. I mean, you think you get some neighborhoods that, you know, Greg's neighborhood is passionate, those guys down, those guys that work down there and own those businesses are very passionate, so I'm hoping to start hearing more good things coming out of that group.
Yeah.
And I would encourage Scott to stay in touch with them and be active with that. That's it.
Thank you. Yeah, I was, actually, when he crashed that...
You did, yes.
I got there late, and everybody was leaving as I arrived, so, thanks for taking, making a report on that.
I was washing dishes at the pancake feed, so...
Yeah. Where we should be.
So, okay, anything else? Anything from city manager report?
Just a couple of things. I have noticed, I've been attending several of these partner agency board meetings, Main Street, the chamber, there's probably one or two I'm forgetting now, but as I've been attending them for the last several months, the same conversation kind of keeps coming up, and I think... kinda keeps coming up and I think it's time for the city to think about facilitating a meeting or some type of forum where we bring, bring everybody together again and start talking about, I think ultimately what everyone's vision is, what everyone's roles and responsibilities are. In fact, there was actually one, one meeting or one day about a month or so ago where the same two boards, or not the same two boards, but two boards on that day met and they both kind of inquired the same thing, they were kind of basically saying, we need, we need an opportunity to get together and, and talk about some of these issues, so everybody kinda knows what, who's doing what, news plan, what sheet music and what page we're on and that sort of thing. So, I think it would be a good, a good opportunity for the city to facilitate such a meeting. The mayor and I have been talking about it now for a couple of weeks and trying to figure out how we facilitate that, but I just wanted to bring it to your all's attention that this is probably a good opportunity to think about what that framework might look like and how we, how we facilitate that conversation so that we can kind of get everybody on the same page.
Make it happen, Captain.
Well, I think that was, that's the plan, anyway, so. We also had a meeting, well, Scott had a meeting with Butler County Youth Livestock Foundation Arena, there's a group of folks that want to, that have been interested and have expressed interest in building more of what I would call a regional arena project within our community, and they had been looking at a number of sites, but had recently settled on an idea or concept for potentially building an arena in, in our business park area, which would be obviously a location worth, with good visibility off of the Turnpike, one of the main corridors in our community. And so, they had kind of met to kind of talk about what that might look like and how that would work. We do have some land, obviously, in our business park that would be available, so we encouraged them to think about how, how they would raise funds for that. The city would likely not be a significant financial contributor, but at this point we don't really have a true plan, we have a concept, so we'd be willing to work with them and trying to figure out how to make that, how to make that work. And if, in fact, the business park is the right location for a regional, location for one of these arenas, then we would definitely be interested in partnering with them to figure out how to make that work. I think one thing that, that our region used to have, the Kansas Council used to facilitate some of those events, particularly at the regional and national level, but it was converted into an aircraft testing facility recently, and so obviously it's not available for hosting these events. That could have the potential of generating some pretty significant economic activity. And if I recall correctly, the concept that the, the livestock foundation presented to us included some indoor arena space with some areas for trailer parking, trailer staging, as well some parking. So, it's pretty rudimentary at this point, but a conversation that continues. Manager will recall that we had a conversation or we've been providing frequent updates on the status of the honor camp and that is still kind of in, in flux. So, the lightest and greatest on that is that the Army Corps of Engineers is not, they tend to deny use of the property for Butler County Fairgrounds on the condition that it didn't really meet their recreational criteria. And so, but they would be opening to talking to Butler County, even the city, and, and, excuse me, the Kansas Department of Wildlife, Parks and Tourism on a potential recreation plan for reuse of that property. But right now, the property, because the honor camp is located on that site and would need to be either demolished or in some manner rehabilitated for recreational use, which we don't really know what the feasibility of, of the second option is, but it would cost approximately two hundred fifty to two hundred ninety thousand dollars to tear down that facility, at least in El Dorado. That's, that's a project that doesn't really have funding at this point. So, there's still a lot of questions with respect to use of, of that site for an arena, whether it be for the fairgrounds and/or a regional type use. In addition to that, if the building were demolished, the property would still need to be unencumbered from the lease arrangement between the Wildlife and Parks with the Department of, or the Department of Corrections and Wildlife and Parks with the United States Army Corps of Engineers. So, it's, it's a pretty complicated transaction that would need to be negotiated, but anyway, this other group is, is looking at this other thing. So, there could be a situation where we get everybody together and get, get one plan moving forward and, and move that direction. Stay tuned on, on that. And in addition, the police department continues to have some vacancies, last reported there was five vacancies, however, we do have two conditional offers of, of employment, so hopefully those will go through and then we'll have three vacancies, but the police department continues to recruit folks and hopefully we can find some folks that are interested in serving the community in, in the form of, in the, in the law enforcement career. So, if you know anyone, please encourage them to reach out to the police department and apply for those jobs and so we can get those positions filled.
Great. Back to the arena, we have, I think, a feasibility study that's been funded through our sales tax, excess sales tax funds. Yeah, thirty thousand dollars, something like that, is that, has that been, is there any movement on that? I mean, is, which entity, it sounds like we've got, still have two entities seeking
the same thing.
Project, yeah, to do that and remind me, I guess, how we're gonna be spending and using that funds and how it gets allocated and who gets to use it towards feasibility study?
Well, when we, when we discussed the feasibility study and went through the sales tax process, we talked, we were talking more of this regional arena and, and those groups are interested in seeing that become a reality and made a provision, you know, if the City of El Dorado helped fund this study, you know, it'd need to be in El Dorado or there'd be a payback clause. It, it appears 4H has, has wanted to go a different direction this whole time, so we've been reluctant, very reluctant in, in spending the City of El Dorado's dollars on a, just a one-use facility like a 4H. That wasn't the, the thought process or anything we discussed about just a, you know, once a week used 4H type county fairgrounds facility. So, we haven't proceeded with the feasibility study.
And we haven't released that money to anybody else to do it either, is that?
What else?
They haven't released it for anybody else to do that either, is that correct?
No, no, so.
When it comes time to use that money, is it, is the City of El Dorado that's expending that or are we offering it to somebody who's doing that, gonna move forward in that direction?
You know, we haven't gone under contract with any consultant or anything and, and, you know, if, if, if a, a 4H county fairgrounds facility is built, you know, out of the honor camp, you know, those folks know what they want, they know what they need to run a county fair in a 4H. Not really in our eyes, the need for the city to fund the feasibility study.
That would fall quite, a, a facility like that would fall kind of in, in the boundary of the county's work, is that correct?
That's correct.
Are we having, or me, I hope I'm asking an obvious question, we've got good conversations with the county and kind of staying, staying in good communication with them as, as all of this kind of plays out, both, both parties, and you made a comment about maybe getting both parties together and finding what the common goals might be and.
Yeah, I had a brief conversation with Will Johnson a few weeks ago, and so I think, you know, they're open to talking about some options as well. We haven't gotten all the parties together in recent time and it, it's probably time for us to sit down and actually do that, get everybody on, on the same page. Will and the county's interest was focused predominantly on, as Scott mentioned, a 4H replacement facility, so they weren't necessarily interested in participating in a regional project that would cost a lot more and would definitely exceed their, their budget and how that would all play out. But I think it behooves us to reach out to them again and kind of figure out if, if that can make it meet, because at the end of the day, if we can figure out a way to plug them into that arena space, but yet still make it available for the regional and/or national events, it would get more usage and perhaps be more efficient than obviously having two facilities that would need to be owned and operated.
Yeah, and, and, and we, and everyone's well aware, if a regional type arena's built for annual, or weekend events, car shows, what have you, whatever, national horse shows, that taxpayers' dollars are gonna be, if taxpayer's dollars are gonna need to be used on a facility like that, it's gonna need to be much bigger than just the City of El Dorado. It's gonna be neither funded at the county level, so. Or, or if they get a lot of private.
Or privately done, yeah.
Their, their concept for the regional arena is a twelve million plus dollar facility.
Yeah, and I, it's my understanding the county's still, still working with the Corps to try and get that done, still exhausting that avenue in terms of getting all of that property.
Yeah, Will did inform me that they're making a trip to Washington in March and they plan to meet with Congressman Estes and talk about the project and hang up with the Corps and maybe figure out a way to get through the bureaucracy to make that happen and I think we'll, we'll continue to get updates as needed and definitely reach out to him and figure out if we can get together and meet with him.
Do, do we as a city support that kind of project right there?
That's, that, that's the question, isn't it? Is that the right place to put a, put that?
Now, just so we're kind of on the same page, are we talking about a facility at the honor campsite or a facility at the business parks?
Honor campsite, I mean, do we, do we, are we partners with the county in terms of thought and that's a, a good use for that property as they pursue, pursue that?
You, you, there, there's concerns with infrastructure out there.
Don't we got a line going right by there too, that, through that area?
A what?
A water line going through there?
You know, that would be Butler County Wholesale Eight Water District, the Wildlife and Parks operates a lift station for sewage out there that ties into our system.
Would we be anticipating annexing that space or would we stay, leave it where it is?
Really, no benefit or draw, I mean, I think maybe we could regulate it if there's something.
But I, I wouldn't think so, I mean, it would, wouldn't be, it's not a revenue generating property, wouldn't be a reason to annex it, I wouldn't think, but.
You know, and, and, and we're not, we're not a hundred percent sure what their vision or the 4H visions is or, or what size, I mean. Definitely a little concerned about maybe just being landlocked and not having room to grow, but, you know, I, I think they're, they're in their planning process as well, so.
Okay.
And they'll definitely communicate with us throughout.
Good, I hope communication does stay strong between county and the city on that, so make sure that we're.
I think at a minimum, the city's interest is removal of this, of the buildings. I mean, as long as the state has taken the, the stance that they're not gonna invest in the dollars in those structures, they're gonna continue, continue to deteriorate and to some degree, that's one of the main entrances into the lake. So, they're, as long as they're there and they're not being used, it's an eyesore, they continue to deteriorate, there are opportunities for vandalism and other belligerent uses, I suppose is the right word. But at any rate, the, the, if we could partner with the county at a, at a minimum to help get those things demolished and then whatever the future is for that property is yet to be determined, I think we both have an interest in clearing the space and getting it taken care of.
Okay. Great, thank you for that conversation. Anything else to be brought before the commission? If none, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move adjourn.
Moved at second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries four to zero, we are adjourned.